So for the first time in many years, we had a really talented pool who stepped forward to join the board, which I think shows great interest in the town, the passion for the town, et cetera. And I know the town board had a really hard time making a decision, but I'm confident that the decision they made will be a wonderful one for the next however many years you decide to serve. So, thank you for stepping up to it, Stephanie.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Jeffrey Grove Estates. It's a re-subdivision as well as site plan approval for what are now 50 town. I'm just making a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak about this application? There being none. We have, we had a series of offline meetings culminating with a really big one. We all came to an agreement, both sides, as to what materials were still missing, what needed to be done. Probably the most important thing is that we gave preliminary sketch approval, as well as preliminary approval, to only one side of the subdivision. That's how they were treating it, because only one side was changing in terms of the re-subdivision. But because it's already filed, we would have had to open up a new public hearing on the entire subdivision. As it turns out, they've decided they're just going to file the partial, leave what was on the left-hand side, I'll call it, intact. That will mean less work for them, less work for us, and no need for a new public hearing just on that subdivision. We have a letter requesting that they adjourn this to November 7th. So first, any comments from consultants? Any comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
Make it a motion to adjourn this to November 7th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Stats Creed Lot Line realignment. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The applicants require a minor subdivision for the lot line realignment, as well as site plan and special use permit. And in essence, as they receive their density variance, they've received various variances. They still need one more variance for the generator. And then you'll come back to us for, I believe, a site plan waiver.
The zoning board granted the generator waiver at their last meeting.
Oh, they did?
So, they are set, but they do need to come back for a site plan waiver.
Once the subdivision plan is filed.
After the subscription plan is filed, after they apply for building permit.
So for Stephanie's, as well as anybody in the audience who's interested in benefit, what happened was is that there was a storage over a garage on one site, one parcel, that was turned into an accessory apartment without approvals. In the meantime, at the adjoining parcel, there was a generator put on, onto the other neighbor's site. So they're doing a little bit of, they're exchanging some land so that the generator now goes on to the appropriate parcel. And we're here to basically approve the accessory apartment. They got the density variance for it as well. As part of our reviews, we had comments from Department of Health, and there's going to be new septic system for the accessory apartment, I believe. That's the only change that's entitled there. So, would you like to speak, Mr. Freeman, after I've usurped your role?
No, the only, the only update would be from the Board of Health. The drawing is still in process. It went back to review by the Board of Health. We have not heard back from them. That is typically a longer two-month process.
Of course it is.
That's going to be kind of the stumbling block in finalizing the accessory apartment. The lot line realignment shouldn't be a problem.
No, I don't believe so. And we're, we work with the Department of Health often. We're aware that they're somewhat underfunded and understaffed, and so it's another reason why it takes a little bit of time to get through there. Any comments from our consultants on the realignment of the lot line, subdivision, et cetera?
I didn't have an opportunity to look at the resolutions, but I know that at some point we discussed having a note on the plan consistent with owner occupation. So I don't know if that was a condition or not.
The condition is worded slightly differently. It says that it will comply with a section of code that requires the owner to occupy the property.
Okay.
And that condition must be met to Ms. Moss's satisfaction. We have Mr. Freeman forwarded to us a utility bill-
That I saw.
...the owner's name on the electric bill, and indicated that the same owner will be occupying the premises shortly, for however long it takes. I believe that they're, he will be living there maybe until they sell it, and I understand you may have an offer? You wouldn't know that, maybe?
I wouldn't know that.
And that the new potentially, the new potential owner wants the accessory apartment, which is why it's being legalized now.
Excellent.
So, I look, by the way, of course, I live down the way from, just down the way from this property. Look forward to seeing the house occupied again since the prior owners were deceased.
So, based on information that Mr. Freeman provided to the board, the board, it's proposed that the board make a finding that the accessory apartment complies with the provisions of 108-8.4b. But we can add language, a condition to the end, compliance with section 108-8.4b, so that if anything changes in the interim, you know, the applicant has to continue to comply until the plan is-
Can we change that wording?
I need to write that in.
So I'm writing that in.
I had suggested it be plan notation, and so here's down the road.
Thanks.
Whoever's looking at the plan.
Can we also add a condition so that it's added to the plan as a note? Ms. Baldoro?
Yep.
Thank you. In the meantime, any comments from the board? Ms. Wasser? Nope. Any comments from the public about this application? I didn't think there would be. I recognized everybody in the audience. So make it a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to guess, Ms. Wisner, you have the resolutions?
I have the resolutions, yes. They're lengthy. So which ones?
Subdivision first.
Subdivision first, okay. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to grant subdivision approval, October 3, 2018. Stats Creed, resolution number 2018-26A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a negative declaration finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environment impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the subdivision plat and authorizes the chairperson or his, or has authorized designee to affix his or her signature to the subdivision plat after compliance by the applicant with the following conditions: One, payment of all fees and escrows; Two, Department of Behavioral, Community Health permission to file; Three, endorsement of the plat by the surveyor; Four, revision of the subdivision plat's title to include the phrase "final plat" and to include Duchess County after Town of Hyde Park; Five, revision of the subdivision plat to include a signature block to remove the owner, the signature line for applicant and replace it with owner, quote unquote, and to include the names and addresses of all owners on the plat; Six, revision of the subdivision plat to include a graphic scale, a key for abbreviations and symbols, and to identify the neighboring property owners; Seven, revision of the site density chart to include a summary of dwelling units rather than percentages; Eight, revision of the subdivision plat to depict the placement of an iron rod at the new western property boundary between 58 and 60 River Road; Nine, approval by the planning board attorney of a deed conveying 0 dot, 0.7, 0.078 acres from parcel two to parcel one and merging it with parcel one. Be it further resolved that prior, that prior to issuance of a building permit for any improvement on parcels one or two as shown on the subdivision plat, the applicant shall provide, the zoning administrator with evidence of a recordation of a deed conveying 0.078 acres from parcel two and merging with parcel one.
Just real quick, Ms. Moss had, had asked that the iron rod be included, but she said it's at the discretion of the planning board, so I just want to leave it up to the board to decide.
And I asked Ms. Moss, who said she strongly preferred it, because all this is-
Okay.
The lot line is not changing at the road, but the lot line is changing along the, at the western, so we'd like to have something so that for future surveyors, et cetera, they can find if there's any problem to make sense. Board agree?
Yes.
I'd agree.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstains or nays? The motion carries unanimously. Do you want to copy this resolution, David?
If it's set, okay, thank you.
I'll give you both of them when they're done.
Okay, the second?
Well, yeah, why don't we send it tomorrow, because this one's going to have to be amended.
Oh, right.
What? Oh, you're, you're set.
I'm set, okay. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to grant site plan and special use permit approval, Stats Creed, October 3, 2018, resolution number 2018-26B. All right, let's do this. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved, be it resolved that the planning board hereby makes the following findings pursuant to section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. One, the project will comply, comply with the applicable requirements of Articles four and five of the zoning law. The site is currently developed with a one-family dwelling and a freestanding, freestanding garage. No new structures are proposed apart from an underground septic disposal system, and the accessory dwelling will be located above the garage. A variance has been granted for the increased density. The new development is a, is minor and will not result in the removal of any trees or valuable natural resources, and will, and will preserve the charac, natural rural character of the area. Two, the project is consistent with the purposes of the zoning law. Three, the project will not result in any excessive off-premises noise, dust, odors, solid waste, or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. This new accessory dwelling above the garage and the installation of the septic field to serve the use will have minimal effect on the surrounding area. Four, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads, as the only associated traffic impact will be the minor increase to serve an accessory apartment. Five, the lot property size, location, topography, vegetation, soils, natural habitat, hydrology, hydrogeology, and its ability to be buffered or screened for the neighboring properties and public roads will be appropriate for the project, which only proposes to use an existing structure for an accessory dwelling unit. Six, the accessory apartment as proposed complies with the provisions of zoning law 108-8.4b. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants requested waivers. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants special use permit and site plan approval to the Stats Family Trust for an accessory apartment subordinate to a one-family dwelling at 60 River Road, and authorizes the chairperson or has authorized designee to affix his or her signature to the site plan after compliance by the applicant of the following conditions: One, payment of all fees and escrow; Two, evidence of recordation with the Duchess County clerk of the approved deed conveying 0.078 acres from parcel two to parcel one and merging it with parcel one; Three, approval of the Department of Health; Four, compliance with section 108-8.4b; Five, revision of, of the site plan to include a notation stating that the accessory apartment or principal dwelling must be owner occupied.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Mr. Freeman. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Very nice.
We're very on top of everything always. I hope that we would work with you again sometime in the near future.
I told him he should bring one of his classes here.
I'll send you a copy tomorrow after it's filed.
The next item on the agenda is Enclave Solar Farm. We are now out of public hearings, and only in workshop mode. This is the first time that the board has seen this application. However, we're familiar with it because this was part of a large re-subdivision that was done. This would be the enclave, which is located on Cream Street, and we reserved a parcel for the seller farm. They've come forward. You can see it over there to your right, so I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Welcome back, Ms. Patty, Mr. Casamento.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. So, the enclave solar project is, is this, can you hear me? Okay. It's a 2.6 megawatt ground-mounted community solar, which is going to be in the 25.01 acre lot that was recently subdivided from the enclave subdivision just to the south. The project's location is unique because it's situated in close proximity to the required utility infrastructure, and it's also set back from Cream Street, and I think it's 592 feet from Cream Street to the nearest solar array panel. The parcel's size and location will allow for the array to be constructed so that there will be a healthy vegetative buffer completely around the array, so it will extremely reduce any visual impacts to surrounding properties. There is a small area of Army Corps wetlands that, right down here, that when we first met with Tad, she had noted that we might want to get those redelineated, and we've done that. And it's pretty much unchanged. So, we'll have those flags picked up, and it'll be included on the next submission, on the next plan. The array will also utilize the emergency access road for site access that will serve the enclave subdivision to the south. Originally, the access road went from Cream Street, and you can vaguely see it. It went up here and down. When we did the initial layout for the array, it caused the array to be segmented so that there was a portion of the array here on this side of the emergency access road, and then more down here actually closer to the wetlands. So, what we've done is we've altered the emergency access road path to provide a more direct access for the array, and also to allow it to be more of a cohesive unit and not segmented by the emergency access road. It also reduced the impervious acreage of the access road from point five, six to point five. So, that's, that's important.
Thank you. Anything else? And we've met, do you want to tell the board who you are, because not everybody's mentioning that?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Michael Cucciara from Nexamp. We are a Boston-based solar developer, but quite active in, in New York State and, and really growing nationwide. We are a company, I think, we've been in business for 11 years, and I think what separates us, and I think adds a lot of value both to landowners and municipalities, is that we develop, build, own, and operate these systems for the long term. That is our sort of intended goal, so making us sort of at one point of contact throughout, and certainly through the construction of this project and hopefully many years beyond. So, but we specialize in community solar projects. The goal of this project is to provide residents both of Town Park and Greater Duchess County with discounted electricity credits that derive from this project. So, just to give a brief overview for the board, this 2.6 megawatt project would produce enough energy for 400 to 500 residents, typical residential meters. That changes depending on who is subscribing to this project and what their energy needs are. That being said, what we do is provide credits as, as a subscriber. It's a no fee, no long-term contracts. What they're agreeing to do are to accept credits on their electric bill that offset their full amount, and then we invoice them at a 10% discount for the energy that's provided. So, it allows many people that are not able to do solar either at their home, or they live in an apartment, or otherwise can't do solar, to enjoy the benefits of clean energy from this local source. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. That's a great, that's a great explanation. And you're aware that we're streamed, broadcast, recorded, and shown on YouTube permanently. So, it's always a good idea to explain projects. Note to our residents here who may want to take advantage of this. So, it's like a little bit of free advertising for you, in other words.
That's, that's great. Yeah, I'm glad I worked on that, though.
And the board also knows, we have, we just approved a solar project, and we have, you're one of six now that we have suddenly before us. This shows you what happens when you pass a law that allows this.
They will come.
It seems to encourage it, yes. So, just for the record, really quickly, I met Mr. Casamento on site and drove, if I can do this, roughly to a point about here, and we were looking, there's, there's an extensive length of, of natural vegetation.
Five feet.
Yep. Uh-huh. Even better.
Ah, there you go.
So, we stopped about here. This shows you the vegetation that will be remaining. This area's been cleared out. We were required to do, show screening between residential and non-residential uses, so we suggest we may need some evergreens in through here during deciduous times. But I'll also add that there's a topographical change. There's actually a hill here.
Right.
I'm not really sure that you could ever see this from the house, just because of the nature of the grade change that goes up. But this will be discussed, and we're also supposed to screen. They're leaving all these trees. It looks as though there's adequate screening potential in through here for right now. This, of course, is part of a bigger parcel that could be subdivided, so I'm just bringing this up to make sure that the board gives a clear idea of what the appropriate amount of screening is. But it was a fun drive back here, actually, and he said, well, we're actually about where we're, this, this central point right here, so.
Correct. And just to add to that, we do have to do some clearing beyond the array for shading purposes. Most of that clearing happens to the south for obvious reasons. But what it does do is it leaves approximately a 25-foot, 20-foot natural buffer of what is there along the property line that will not be done. And one of the things that we've worked with Nexamp is, inside of the fence array would be clear-cut and stumped for obvious reasons, for construction purposes. For the most part, it's going to follow grades. There'll be some grading change to accommodate for the road-
Right.
-to go through, and it'll just transfer into the site so that it becomes more of a smooth area for drainage and that type of thing. But outside of that array, we're not stumping. So what we'll do is we'll cut the trees, we'll grub, and then reseed after, but it'll be a, an individual maintenance there for trees that get up over 12, 10 to 12 feet, that they'll come in and take down an individual tree. But it'll become more of that low 10, eight to 12 feet scrub brush area that can remain and still going to be a vegetative area, just not tall, because we need to keep the efficiency of the array up. So therefore, we want to avoid having those tall trees.
We want to encourage that. I also want to just remind the board that this, this is the property line, the parcel that was created for the solar, but this area, which would be where the homes are, there's still, this is an expansive, open space area long before you get to the houses. So-
Correct.
What I'm trying to say is, is in my opinion at least, I don't think we're going to need to have a lot of screening in through, even during leaf-off. It's going to be pretty thickety, et cetera. You're not going to really see it from the homes in the enclave.
Can I ask, what is the height of the panels?
12 feet, I believe.
12 feet.
And these are tiltable?
No, these are-
These are fixed.
These are fixed tilt.
That's what I thought, because that's why they're 12 feet. Okay, before I go on to ask the board questions, and thank you, by the way, for your interest in investing in Hyde Park. We welcome these kinds of projects, and we're happy that we're selling, producing green, or we're producing green energy within two years. It's exciting, renewable. Let's start with the consultants. Ms. Axelson, comments?
Yeah, first of all, this is exciting to see kind of the second application that's, I know it's not the second one we've received, but it's pretty well put together, fairly detailed, and it, you know, I can feel that there's the potential to move this along, if possible. So, I noticed you have certain things going on with the vegetation. What I'm recommending is a landscaping plan sheet that puts all that together. In other words, it's going to show clearly existing wooded areas to remain. It's going to show the, you know, trees that are going to be maintained at a 10-foot height. And then I'm recommending some supplemental buffer plantings. In other words, kind of filling in the gaps along certain areas. And I'll make my recommendations, and, and we can move forward from there. I was pleased to see the bee pollinator seed mix noted on the erosion control plan. That's another thing. Everything, anything has to do with planting eventually, beyond one landscaping sheet, I think.
That's fine.
Glad to hear that the wetland delineation was done. And then, at the, sort of, towards the later part of the recent solar application, we got into the visual a little bit more. And so what I'm suggesting is that we front-end that. And so I'm going to give you a comment memo that's going to list a bunch of sites, but what I've seen for, say, cell tower applications and others, is that there's a way of mapping something. In other words, here's the site, here's the area, and there's a way of highlighting topography, say, in one map, and then in another map, topography with vegetation, and then the map would show you areas of potential visibility. So what I'm suggesting in, in this review is sort of a initial visual assessment with some mapping, noting these sites, and then the board can have a look at that and determine whether they need anything more detailed on any of the specific sites. So kind of a two-fazed visual assessment.
How far out do you want?
Well, let me list to you the, the sites, and that will give you an idea. So, Cream Street, Greenfields Park. I'm going from closer features to farther away. Top Cottage, Roosevelt Farm Lane Trail, Beck Park, Peach Hill Park, Eleanor Roosevelt National Historic Site, and then any other site the planning board might have in mind. So I'm looking for some input. So that, that's pretty far reach.
Beck Park is so far away, you could, Molly's Way-
Which park?
Beck Park.
Okay.
Is on the other side of Molly's Way. Molly's Way is a steep incline up a hill where they have magnificent views. I drove up Molly's Way and looked, excuse me, from the public roadway. You can't see any of this site. There's one house up at the top where right now all they see are trees, and they see the top of Bosie's, a sort of 50s flat building. They may be able to take in some of it, but we don't typically try to protect views from a private, private home.
So would you like me to delete Beck Park?
I would say delete Beck Park.
What about Peach Hill?
Peach Hill Park, we can go look up there. I, I hadn't even thought about that, but that was what, you could see the last one in front was Peach Hill Park.
Yeah, and I just kind of looked at the city.
And they do have an LA that may, that may look that direction, which we should look. Ms. Wisner, Ms. DiNapoli, and I drove up to Top Cottage. You can see nothing from Top Cottage now.
Okay. Do you want me to take that one off the list?
Yeah, because-
Do you want to change with the seasons?
The, the trees around it now are so unpruned. When I, when they first, when they first rehabilitated it and reopened it and added it to the tour sites, it's angled so that you're, you look at the river and the mountains, and actually, you could see it back then, but I, I'm afraid the Park Service may be cylinder-funded. Diane can make a comment there. She does tours.
It's more of a question. And I agree, you, you can't see anything, unfortunately.
From Top Cottage?
From Top Cottage. But let's say, by some miracle, the National Park Service has some money, and then they decide to take care of that issue so that the vista is now seen again. Will that be impacting one of, I mean, that?
At Top Cottage, the views face west. The views face west. The views to, that would face east are, I don't think, ever going to be limbed up and tried to make a scenic vista, because there's a, there's a subdivision right there.
There's a subdivision in between.
In between, that has all of its trees as well, on the same hill.
Right.
And I don't think that you want to see, you would be impacting your historic resource if you looked right at those houses. And it's a fairly, they're actually up a little ways, but then it goes up again, if you remember when we went out. So I think you can take Top Cottage off.
Okay, what about, you know, starting from farther away, what about Eleanor Roosevelt National Historic Site?
You couldn't see this from there either. It's too far away.
Should I delete that?
Yeah.
It's lower elevation.
Keeping Peach Hill, Roosevelt Farm Lane Trail?
No, it's flat.
The trail, the trail connects the FDR home to Val Kil. I believe that there, is there a way to walk from Val Kil all the way up to Top Cottage?
Well, it is all in the woods.
Yes, yes.
So then probably yes.
Delete that.
No, 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 keep, keep the farm lane.
Keep it. Oh, okay.
I can't imagine it would-
But it's lower.
But it's all wooded.
Really wooded.
Wooded and lower.
Right, yeah. No, I think you can delete that.
Okay. And then, so we would be left with Cream Street, Greenfields Park-
Greenfields Park is also pretty far away, and it's lower.
Greenfields Park is one of the closer-
But it's lower in elevation.
It's lower in elevation.
Okay, so-
You climb before you get up to here.
Get rid of Greenfields Park?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're down to Cream Street and Peach Hill Park.
So what happens is that you go by-
We can delete-
Bricks Farm.
Everything but Cream.
You go by Bricks Farm, and Bricks Farm is where it's rolling and very pretty, and then you turn around and you see the fire station, and then you get to your place.
Right.
So you would have so much intervening, there's no way they're going to see it either. So it's really Peach Hill Park and-
The west side of Cream Street, right?
Yeah, Cream Street, but-
Okay.
So that makes it a lot easier.
Right, and as we were, it's 592 feet.
There you go.
If I, whoops, maybe I didn't do that right.
What Liz had originally asked was first them to do a topo analysis and identify any high spots where this could potentially be visible, right?
That was the general concept.
Right.
But, but-
To confirm what we're saying.
The other intention that I had was to try to give applicants folks an idea of what they're going to have to look at, because I felt like we got to it late in the process. I didn't even realize we were going to be doing visual assessment of the first one, and then it became necessary. So I thought, since we know that that's an issue, let's deal with it right up front.
So, if you, if you want to take a look at the file for salt, uh-
Yeah, salt point seller.
Salt Point Seller, sorry, too many seller names. You can see what they did is their initial visual impact analysis. It's a sheet, and it just identifies certain points, and then it gives the distance and points out the change. What happened was is that they did not identify Peach Hill Park.
Right.
And when I climbed- And what I climbed, this is a fairly large, I'm from the south, so everything that's tall is like a mountain to me. But it's just a hill.
It's a hill.
It's a hill. I hadn't seen mountains when I was growing up, so it's a hill. But when you get up to the top, there are several different trails. And then at the top, there's, they call it the summit. It's a cleared area, and then each one has, there's, I believe, six spokes, which each has its own LA. And one may actually look right at this one. The Salt Point did some, because this is high up looking down, they did some white pines at the very far edge.
Right.
When they grow up, it'll just shelter, because everything else is a deciduous tree there. And then they also did some educational interpretive signage, which was really cool, because it shows kids the value of solar when they're climbing and hiking, et cetera. And they added a bench, I think. And they also donated some pollinator mix. But that's something I can think of that's really relevant, besides Cream Street.
And if they were in, just if I may, if it was at Peach Hill Park, they'd be seeing the other solar before they even saw ours.
No, each one is, and we've screened for the solar.
Right.
That's the thing, is during the summer, when leaves are off, up, they'll actually only see like, like that of it.
Right.
So in the winter, they'd see the whole thing.
Gotcha.
Because of where they're removing the trees to. So we had them add some evergreens just to help shelter during leaf-off. Because Peach Hill Park has, it's in the notes for the last application, but they have a large number of visitors and throughout the year. People do cross-country skiing and just hiking up there. Have you ever done it? It's actually kind of fun to go up there. It's a, I enjoy it.
Beautiful sight.
Beautiful sight. And that's the purpose of this mapping method, which is, I realize these are low, you know, structures in the landscape, of course, but the whole purpose of this type of mapping is to just simply look within a radius. And let's just say, it looks like the radius is Peach Hill Park. It's a pretty small radius, and it allows you to just look at visibility according to topography without vegetation and topography with vegetation. And it just, it'll just give blobs in the landscape, and it'll give the board a better clue about whether they actually need any kind of line-of-sight look. In other words, if that mapping thing works, you really aren't going to need.
Anything else. And Peach Hill Park, as I said, it is public, so if there are impacts, we want to make sure we can potentially mitigate those somehow.
Sorry.
But the board is aware, just to make sure that Mr. Cuciara understands, you can't screen these completely. And, yeah, they're big, and that's, we all, I think, believe that the benefits to renewable energies outweigh some of the potential visual impacts, so. Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Axelsson?
Only that, you know, I focused on the solar law to kind of bullet-point a few things. We'll need some kind of a glare report and decommissioning plan. And then I'll get into site plan comments. Those were the big bullet items. Let me just see if I have any EAF items. The EAF was in pretty good shape. The one thing that came up in the narrative had to do with the Blandings Turtle issue, which I understand it's not flagged for the site. We ran into this issue before. I don't know if you're going for NYSERTA funding at all?
We are.
Okay. So, and also in the SWIP, two things that come up are that you're going to want to sign off, I think, from DEC. Or at least some kind of a definitive thing that tells that thing isn't on the site, or it's not likely to be on the site. Or if it is, we're implementing these mitigation measures even though it isn't likely to be on. So that's one item. The other one's the SHIP-O letter, which I think you already have. So.
Mr. Cuciara can maybe explain this, or Mr. Casamento. But the last project we, that we had before us, we actually issued a NEGDEC using the DEC environmental mapper.
Right.
After we issued the NEGDEC, they asked us to correct it, because they had studies that they had been showing to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that we were never given. So I, kind Mr. Dupree left the house for a moment. Evil Mr. Dupree came out, and my hair blew, my head blew off. So any studies, as you know, with our lead agency, were supposed to be getting it, not being shared with us. Because the first thing I asked was, how do we change the NEGDEC when we don't have any of the information, the studies? So we got the studies, et cetera. U.S. Fish and Wildlife was going to take six weeks to respond. They wanted to move quickly, so we hired, we did a peer review, hired a consultant, an environmental consultant, who basically agreed with part of this study, because U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for the Indiana bat accepts the same study, acoustic study for northern long-eared. DEC does not. The northern long-eared forages inside a forest between the lower and upper canopies. The Indiana bat forages in open cleared areas. And they did all the acoustical hinging of the open cleared areas. So we were just told today, when I had a meeting with, or yesterday, sorry, with another seller application, that people are using the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service because of funding, the funding requirements through NYSERTA. You have to do, have sign off from the US FWS. Am I, I'm not seeing a nod or anything else. Anybody agreeing?
And there are similar requirements with the SWIP now, too. I'm seeing these sign-offs needed.
I'm not aware that NYSERTA funding. I'm not aware that NYSERTA funding is necessarily tied to that. I think they need the NEGDEC from the municipality.
That's what I thought.
I would imagine that we would circulate our EAF after lead agencies declared, right? And those agencies.
We declare and circulate at the same time.
Right. So at that time, those agencies would make their comments, right?
We do not circulate typically to Fish and Wildlife.
I see.
The DEC for us is the sort of environmental reviewer of record.
Circulate.
And the reason, the reason why I say this is, so the DEC environmental mapper is very parcel-specific.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's really, Liz told me, I hadn't even used the new one until I did, but it just pops up in there and makes answers for you, which is great. But the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, their version of the environmental mapper is county-wide. This county is laced with endangered, threatened, and rare species in wetlands. So except for a tiny strip along the river, everything else shows potential habitat for anything, every ETR species. So the reason I'm saying this is, if you're going to use their version, then you're going to see the county, and it's going to show that you're going to need to do an environmental, you're going to need to do, submit some sort of environmental review, environmental study. If it's, you rely on the DECs, I don't think you're going to see any hits in this area.
And we, if you remember, on the enclave subdivision, we did have correspondence with the DEC, and they asked us to put an informational flyer together, an informational like that, which is what we would intend to be able to do again and replicate here, very similar to that project, which is the same habitat, the same.
Yeah, I just saw it alluded to in the narrative, but I didn't, it wasn't really clear. So yes, if you can expand on that from the prior record.
Are you going to assume that the Blandings are there?
Right. Same, the same way we did, the other came about, we were going to keep the same thing. We're waiting for them to say it, because that was for a different project.
Sure.
We can't go and say, yes, we're going to hold that study from that project that was next door. So we're waiting for this period. I assume we're going to get the exact same comment back.
We believe so.
To create that.
We believe so.
Right.
Of note, by the way, Anne and I, are we the last two left who did the biodiversity assessment training?
Probably.
Yes. The last two standing. So we had a six-month biodiversity assessment.
10 months.
10 months, I'm sorry. Six months in the field, the rest, right. So I can tell you right now that the amount of tree canopy, not for Blandings, once you remove trees.
You're going to make it better.
You're going to make it better for them.
Right.
But they like a degree of solar penetration that you're not going to have right there in their wandering habits. So, and it's really because of the wetland presence that's there, I think, because it's sometimes wet, sometimes not wet, which is what they like, vertical pools. So at any rate, we just wanted to make sure that that was cleared up in advance for you. Any other comments? Ms. Axelsson?
Right now, no. Those are the major ones I thought I wanted to bring up, and we got some good feedback, so.
Kida, Ms. Pollardoro?
Two comments. The first is that you mentioned in the EAF that the OPRHP letter you received prior covered both parcels. But if you could just give me a copy of it again, and, because I started digging through the file, and it was.
We had gotten an OPRHP letter for the enclave subdivision, and I had gotten a new letter from them for just the specific project. So it's a new letter just for the 25.01 acre parcel.
Okay, good. Because I wanted, I was going to ask you to prove out that it considered both sites.
Yeah, yep. But I can resend that to you.
Okay, please do, just because I didn't have it handy. Second, the board, you know, we're going to have to rework some of the easements that we granted, that we reviewed and approved with the first subdivision, but that's fine. That's all legal work. I just wanted Ken to confirm that no portion of this lot is under that open area restriction.
Correct.
Okay. So there's nothing preventing you from cutting down those trees?
No. We specifically left the entire 25.01 acre lot open. And we actually even had some numbers, rough numbers, for what we thought would be there for clearing and stuff in that old EAF, but with the idea that we knew we were coming back.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
So.
If I remember correctly.
That's fine.
So, yeah, the actual, what Michael alluded to before, on the lower half, just below this, between the houses of the subdivision and the actual property line, that is an area that is open space protected.
So it stops at the property line.
Correct.
The new property line.
Correct.
It's passive recreation open space.
Yes.
Right. And there's, a portion of it is the water parcel also. So there's a combination of the two right there that would never be cleared.
And that was one of the complications of the enclave in the first place, was the water parcels had to be changed, the easements, the access.
Not that I've seen yet.
So.
Did you get your new plat numbers yet?
Not yet.
No.
Just keep trying.
Sorry. Sorry, that's what's, that's what's preventing me, just that, from signing the site plan. I think we've everything else worked out, right? Pretty much?
Filing of those documents, we're separating the subject, but yes.
Sorry.
We're really close to getting all of the easements signed by both parties.
Right. And the sidewalk district needs to be finalized.
So they have a few finalized.
Didn't the town board pass that?
I didn't think so.
Oh, no. I thought they passed a law.
They did.
It was passed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, so, no, no, no. So it's six of one, one half of the other. They passed a law requiring maintenance of sidewalks. However, I think they need to repass it once the plat is filed, because it's not actually considered a town road until the plat, it's not a road that's created until the plat is filed. So they're prepared, and they've set up the foundation for such an action.
And it alludes to your street names.
Right. The plat is filed, but again, before the town board is the formal acceptance of the road names for the subdivision, which has not been done yet either.
So the pieces are in motion.
Okay. That's good. Let me start to my right. Ms. DiNapoli, any comments for enclave sellers?
Not at this time.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
This looks great. I like that you're going to reroute the road, keep everything kind of compact. This looks like it might even be an easier site than the Salt Point solar one.
It's flatter, for one.
Will you have to do much, I was trying to read, and I heard you, but there's minimal grading?
There's, they're very limited grading. The grading is really around the access road.
Right, right.
There are two piles that are left over from the old.
That's right. The old development, yes.
That's one right there.
Correct.
Okay.
And both of those piles would be dealt with with the enclave subdivision.
Oh, okay.
As used on that site for site grading in that. And if there's no use for that, depending on the time, that we would spread that up in there.
Gotcha.
So that it was still a flat area.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser, any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Pickett?
I've got a question. The project area shows that it's going out alongside Cream Street, but what, I think there's another line in there. What is the distance from Cream Street that you plan on having the?
592.
It's 592 feet from Cream Street to the nearest direct.
Right there to there is 592 feet.
Oh.
Gotcha. Okay.
There's a line of clearing that's a little closer, but it's only by, I think, 65 or 75 feet.
I was, I messed this up. I was looking at this as the, is the area, not, you've actually got panels in there, so.
Good to go. Thank you. Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add, except I'm very thrilled that we have more solar coming to Hyde Park.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think.
I just want to point out that Ms. Moss did provide comments. I don't know if the whole planning board got them, but you may just want to go over some of the questions that she had, such as, some of the waivers do not provide specific reasons. Does the board want more narrative detail?
So let me read them.
Okay.
We'll need signature blocks, which you know that ultimately. Does the board want updated wetland boundaries? You've already updated, because it was last updated, I believe, in 2004, but you've already done that. You're going to provide those. And she'll want to locate the wetland boundary in the field prior to commencement of construction, so it should be flagged.
They have that listed.
The buyer retention that's shown across, across shown two, I can't read. Anyway, the detail on sheet C101 represents a landscape plan, what sheet is found on.
How it's getting across the road to the other side, that was her...
It's just all sheet flow, so, there's not a third.
That means...
Over the ground.
Over the ground. And her question was, does this well go direct, does the sheet flow go directly into the wetland?
No, it goes directly to the basin.
To the basin?
Yes.
So, I think when we...
And then their overflow goes toward there.
Okay, okay. Pete's not here, but I know that when we had our meeting, we discussed, it looked as to Pete, some might not go directly into the retention basin. It may go to the wetland, but that's up for you guys to discuss.
That's fine.
Stormwater access and maintenance agreements, details and schedule need to be on the plans. Easements need to be shown on the plans. Six waivers requested, the reasons are not site-specific. The board will want more narrative detail. I do not recommend waiving location of trees with over three or four foot diameter. If there are any significant trees in through here...
They're going.
They're going to have to go. That's why I'm like, do we need to locate those?
The area that we've shown to be cleared is, needs to be cleared.
Duh.
Are there any really significant trees in through there? Hugely significant.
I think, here, let me just say, by the way, at three or four foot diameter is...
That's significant.
So what happened is, is that at the site for Bellville, where the hotels being, going up across in the CIA, there is a series of London plane trees or sycamore that were estimated being over 500 years old. And we thought they weren't going to be removed, and they were. And so I think that's what Tad's concern is, is there anything that's significant old growth in through this area. But I don't know where you would, what, move, remove panels here and add some here or something? There's not a lot of leeway there.
Right. And reality is, as we talked about, we actually looked before, if you go back to the original subdivision that was planned here, the majority of this area that we're clearing was all part of that old clearing.
Houses and paths.
Right. So, swaths of this, where the two cul-de-sacs, as you see the one on the bottom and the one up to the top, those were all cleared and there was all going to be houses in them.
I think what will just help is if we have a landscaping sheet that shows limits of disturbance, you know, where the trees are going to stay, that'll make everything clearer. In addition, our code references isolated trees with a diameter breast height over, uh-oh, 24 inches, I think. That would be an isolated tree. I don't really see any isolated trees in through here, just looking down. These are all thick.
They're all usually part of it.
Yeah, the trees, the London planes that came down, were not, they were isolated as well, but in a sort of a cluster. One was saved, I'm happy to tell you. I don't see if these are racking or fixed mount, they're fixed mount?
Correct.
Because that's what usually happens with 12. Signage details only to provide. We know that, you're not going to have a sign at the front that's...
No. There is a sign on the site plan noted at the gate who the responsible party is, a number for emergency access and contact.
You also, there's a whole, we had a whole sheet of signs that were attached to your mechanical buildings, et cetera, I believe there has to be required, those are required. Tad wants to see all those.
So, one thing to note that is very different than some of the other stuff our company has done from solar providers, is they have one real rack system. So, everything's in one place, kind of centrally located. The inverter and everything like that is on that. So it's not, where we've seen some of the other providers where there's an inverter here, an inverter there, and, you know, and all throughout the site, this is not that design.
The Cypress Creek, the Salt Point, where we just did, also has one inverter location. A big pad, it's like the size of a...
No, it's...
Train car, I guess maybe. I mean, about 10 feet tall. So, and also, I'm supposed to ask you, sorry, she has clear analysis. The special use permit, point three, explain why, the special use permit four, maybe more information about temporary impacts, and she'd like you to estimate the length of construction. That noted. We, Tad and I met today with the people from Cypress Creek. Apparently Central Hudson is not requiring, but strongly encouraging, which that usually means requiring. My experience with Central Hudson, that you do battery storage, I don't know if that will apply to yours, because you're a community seller.
No, we have our interconnection agreement and study. No comments on storage. We're allowed to interconnect right onto the grid for this one.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
This was a late addition, and as it was explained to me in layman's terms, for people like me, the real problem with the grid is balancing it, because there are times of heavy demand, times of lower demand. And so apparently there are generators some places where you try to power them up and send energy back up into the grid. And by the time it takes maybe seven or eight hours to get as much as they need, the need for what caused it isn't there anymore. So, they're encouraging, i.e., sort of requiring, a battery to be for this location at Salt Point. And it's going to go, it'll be, the pad will extend the same length as the inverter, it'll be next to the inverter where the battery cell is going to be. So, I just want to make sure that Ms. Moss did not want to make this a de minimis finding, but somehow in our conversation today, it worked! It is! Because I don't think the planning board would have an issue. It's located, we saw where the inverter pad is, and it's at the top of the hills, surrounded by the fence, surrounded by the arrays. It's screened already, so, and she said, she agreed that in the overall size of the project, that it was de minimis.
Michael, originally, I was going to incorporate Tad's comments, and I'm wondering if it would just make sense for the applicant folks to have a copy of Tad's comments and just do a reply.
Our intention was to reply to it.
Yeah, and that's fine, then I won't...
They're just, her comments are a little more cryptic in some cases than what yours are.
Well, they're mostly addressed at this point.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of them are, a lot of them are, they'll be explained.
Are there any notes on fencing? Any plan for fencing around it, or isolating?
Yes, all the way around.
It's required, I believe, by the federal, yeah.
It's required, which is my, well, for a different project.
Seven foot.
It's a seven foot, and our code requires black chain length rather than silver. It's just in the code, under 108-4.5. And I don't really have any other comments, because most of mine were basically already addressed, or already mentioned, glare prevention, the endangered threat and rare species stuff. And then we'll need to, once we see all the natural vegetation that's going to stay, we can decide if we need to have any more landscaping. And the reason why we didn't, we're prepared to type and circulate tonight was, this has to go to county planning. I don't want to circulate to them and then say there's no landscaping plan and kick it back and cause another 30 days. So if you can provide us quickly with a landscaping thing to show limited tree disturbance, and if you have any suggestions...
Michael, I...
Right, just you don't show, you don't have anything added into it for suggest, yeah, proposed. And Heather's, that was one of the things that, she didn't like the landscaping plan at the last solar, so it went back, and I'd rather avoid that. If you think there's any areas that you need to have some evergreens, put them in there.
Also, the EAF, additional information.
We need some, you know, things addressed. I think it'll be nicely pulled together.
Yeah.
And try to get these out as soon as I can.
But I was going to, I was going to suggest we put this on for the next meeting?
Well, hands on, how soon they can turn it around.
Because I don't know how quickly you can turn around the additional information?
Well, we'll turn around the landscaping plan, I mean...
But I don't have my comments yet.
Right, oh, right, we can't do it for the next meeting then, because they're going to need to respond to your comments for additional information.
I haven't gone all the way through site plan, just, and figured, why not give them everything all at once, so that they have...
So we should place this for the, place all this for the first meeting in November?
When do you expect to give them?
We only have one meeting in November.
That's the only meeting in November, where we can then type, circulate?
But that should be enough.
Instead of public hearing? Can, do you think you can get this memo out to them next week?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
If I can get it out Friday, I will.
Thank you.
You know, Friday or Monday, that's my goal, so.
I mean, I, we learned a lot of our, we learned a lot with our newest, with our first application, a lot, so I anticipate this going a lot more quickly. I mean, I didn't realize we were not sending a complete application to Heather at DC Planning, so I want to make sure we don't cause that delay as well. And you'll want the letter from OPRHP, they can get to you quickly, Victoria. Otherwise, it seems like we're good to go as soon as you, whatever information Liz thinks appropriate for the EAF.
Yeah.
So as soon as you get your memo out, and then we will see you in November, if not before, for any, if I need anything. Does anyone else need to do a site visit out here?
I mean, I would, I always like to go visit the sites.
We have to go with Mr. Casamondo, because it is locked off because of past theft, to put it politely. So, you snuck in. So if we want to arrange another site visit, Ann needs to do it on the weekends, if that's possible. Would anyone else like to do a quick site visit early on?
I went, but I couldn't get in.
No, you can't get in, and Ken has a big old truck, and he just drives on in.
Oh, good.
It's pretty easy.
Yeah, put some topography in the northeast corner that I keep, so.
And you know, we could still, it's still light enough that if we met, like we did that one night for the enclave, just immediately after work?
That's fine.
From like 5:30 some night?
We can circulate an email and pick a date.
Yeah, okay, sounds good, thank you. I appreciate it.
I will circulate that email and pick a date. You'll have to excuse me, because I don't think I need to go back again, and you don't need to, you can't pile that many people in that truck. But I'll, we'll pick a date that's mutually convenient to all. So, we'll get this out as soon as we can. As you know, anytime you need an offline meeting call, otherwise, thank you. I look forward to reviewing this application.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, I think only one person's leaving the table. Is Teconic Realty, this applicants are seeking a minor subdivision for an existing, what I'll call shopping center. A note, Mr. Oliver has refused this application. He does work for the owners of the site, so I'll be appointing one of our alternates. Do you know which one is, is it?
Who's due?
Who's due?
Probably Tori.
I can't remember the last one we had.
I know.
It was Rob on the list.
Rob was on Town Center North.
I don't think Tori has done one.
Right, I don't think Tori's done that.
Okay, so I'll appoint Tori at the next meeting. Let me make sure I make note of that. So, they're seeking, they're going to subdivide an existing shopping center into four lots, and they're also, at the same time, they're going to need to seek site plan approval for each new parcel. The parcels have been very artfully drawn, so as to, they're going to need a bunch of cross easements, transportation preparation for the sewer line. There's some complications to it, but in essence, they've created lots that have the average minimum frontage needed along 9G, and they attempted to, I believe, make sure that all the maximum pervious is not exceeded. And they, they tried, there's been shared parking throughout here. It may occur, the current uses, there's not always a lot of cars there filling it up, but at some point, we, there may be a need for shared parking, that will be discussed. So Ms. Leibert, welcome back. I'm going to turn it over to you now, sorry.
Thank you. You always do the entire presentation for me, so...
Well, I read our bylaws, and I'm supposed to be doing that, I didn't know.
Oh, I didn't know that either.
Yeah.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
So I'm Kelly Leibert, and that's me, representing Teconic Realty Associates, which most of you know is the Page family.
I'll talk you through the other thing.
This property, I think most of you know, is on the southern end of Hyde Park, on 9G. It's the home of hospice. I think probably everyone knows that building. There's four properties on this locat, or four buildings on this location, and they've been there for many, many years. The applicant is seeking to subdivide this 9.7 acre lot into four lots, which really encompasses each of the buildings, as the chairman had indicated. I think LRC did a fantastic job of creating the new lots. We did meet with the town in the pre-application meeting and had extensive discussions about this. So we created four new lots that, for all intents and purposes, meet the bulk requirements of the zoning district, which is the neighborhood business district. The exception is two lots don't meet scale, and so we have submitted an application to the ZBA for the scale variance. I thought it was two.
No, three.
It was three. Oh, thank God, you're here.
It's only the front where the insurance is, it meets scale now. I don't think you could actually meet scale on some of the other ones, it's just not possible with all the parking that's there.
It's not possible, yeah. The site is served by municipal water, so this is Dutchess County Water and Wastewater.
No, this is Town of Poughkeepsie. Your Town of Poughkeepsie, your Town and City of Poughkeepsie.
I thought Water and Wastewater manages this.
Nope.
Okay, so...
I know that because I just met with Bridget today, too.
Oh, good, okay. So it's served by municipal sewer as well. This is one of the unique parcels that actually has sewer in the Town of Hyde Park. Each of the buildings, you know, has its own requisite water service, so with the creation of the lots, that's not a issue that we have to address. We did speak to Victoria when we had our pre-application meeting. As the chairman had indicated, there will be a series of easements that will be required for access, reciprocal access easements, parking and utilities, which will work with Victoria. I think you had some suggestions on how to structure that. I think honestly, the discussion that we had is, that's probably the most challenging part of this whole subdivision. It's a pretty de minimis application. When we did have this pre-application meeting, I think the town had indicated that they thought it would also be wise for us to get site plan approval for each of these lots that we're creating, so then there's a clean basis for each of those parcels.
There's a one on record.
There is a one on record. So the application before you is for subdivision, and then for site plan approval for each of the four newly created lots.
But we'll be conducting joint public hearings on all of it.
Yes, so I think LRC did a great job. The top of each application indicates the lot number and the major tenant that's on that lot. Again, all of those meet the bulk requirements, with the exception of the three lots that need the ZBA approval from, or for scale. We are proposing...
I think that, given the fact that the area variance requirements all involve impacts to the neighborhood and the surrounding community, I have a feeling you might get them, saying, since it already exists.
They already exist. There's no new improvements that are proposed, so no changes to the buildings, I know, except, hold on, he's all wired up from his application. We are required to have a monument sign for each of the lots on the entrance of the lot. So right now, I think there's two signs...
You're allowed, not required, but I think, I think they're probably going to want them.
They are, I mean, I think that the location of the signs, we can talk about those, you know, we've shown them on the site plan. Tad will require us to provide her with a detail of that sign, which we will do, we just wanted to come before you tonight and get some of your comments. We also had proposed sidewalks, I, you know, we sort of preempted and thought that the planning board was going to ask for this.
It's smart.
So we did propose sidewalks along the front of 9G, with the exception of, I just want to point it out, in front of State Farm, there are parking spaces that exist now and deadhead into 9G. There isn't sufficient area there along the right of way to pull those parking spaces back and place the sidewalk in the right of way. There is a drive-through that exists for that particular building that should exist, so we need to maintain that driveway through access point and ensure that cars can safely back out of those parking spaces, so...
This is, the drive-through is not used currently?
Correct.
But it was used for two other different uses, as I recall?
It was, if I remember, I think right before State Farm moved in, I think there was a bank that was there at one time.
No, there was a bank, and then, after that, there was a place where you dropped off medical blood?
Yes, yes.
Whatever.
Oh, right.
Because that was a drive, so we have to always bear in mind that it's not just planning for current uses, but future.
Correct.
What's the distance between those spaces and the...
Forty-eight feet.
Oh.
There's 48 feet from the...
To the, to the grass swale right here.
It's basically from, from the curb to the property line, it's 66 feet, first 18 feet is...
The parking spaces.
Parking spaces, and then there's 48 feet of turnaround. And actually, in that regard, I got looking at the neighborhood business district standards and was kind of looking toward the possibility of reconfiguring some aspects of the site to conform more closely with what's required. So, for example, on that lot, one of the thoughts I had was to sort of flip the parking, in other words, the parking would nose in along the curbing on the east side, you could run, continue the sidewalk along the front, and you'd have enough room there to do a green strip. So that was one of the thoughts that I had there.
How would they take advantage of the drive-through?
The drive-through is there.
I don't know, work around it, or the other thing you could do is...
Well, that's the access for the drive-through.
Well, the other possibility would be to move the spaces back about, you know, enough to accommodate a five-foot sidewalk and, yeah, easily a, I don't know, 15-foot swath of green?
Well, I think that the...
And you'd still have room for the parking to nose in and have turnaround.
Well, I don't know if we necessarily know that, so I don't, I appreciate that, and it's something that we have to look at.
Well, there's 66 feet, 66 feet to play with between...
Wait, which lot number is this?
The front lot line and...
I'm sorry, I forgot, forgetting, is that lot number one?
Three.
So if you just, if you just do the numbers, you have an 18-foot parking, parking space, you need 24 feet max of turnaround, and then you have another 24 feet left. So, there's some, you know, room to play around, I think, to try to make these a little bit more, with a little bit more green space.
Do you guys take a look at that? I think that's a good suggestion.
Here and there, a little less parking.
That is really wide, although, I know where the draw, I mean, I, we, I used that office once for a couple of months, for a political campaign, so I know that trucks also used to go in there because there's unloading right in through here, I think it is. So we just want to make sure that we have adequate room for, again, a future use, that we want to have that...
The drive-through.
The drive-through as a possibility.
Right, okay. So you want to keep the drive-through, okay.
And since, I, I'm going to take it you guys are finished, so I can let her continue on, you have some other things to add?
Yes, other than the signs and the sidewalks, there were a number of waivers that we requested for obvious reasons, because it's existing.
Yes.
So Nicole very well listed those on the application, so you can see where those are.
And you know, from hearing our other resolutions, we'll consider them and make findings to grant the resolutions, I mean, grant the waivers as needed. I'm sorry, so Liz, continue on? Other comments?
Let's see. So, let's see here. So I went through neighborhood business district. Some of this has to do with labeling what you have for existing vegetation on the site, adding a landscape buffer along School Street, maybe doing limited buffer plantings along the northern site boundary, just along the parking, near the dialysis, the north side of the dialysis parking area, behind the building. And then creating more landscaped areas along the Route 9G frontage of each of the proposed lots, to just kind of, kind of green up the view a little bit, adding trees, other plantings to kind of supplement some existing landscaped areas, maybe expand those a little bit. And then adding small pedestrian plazas, or showing where you have some existing pedestrian plazas or showing where you have some existing pedestrian amenities on each of the sites, on each of the remaining lots. What?
What do you, the pedestrian amenities?
Benches?
What do you talk about?
Benches and green areas and that kind of thing. And then, you know, some of my comments will have to do with reducing parking area to, you know, accommodate a little bit more green space on the site. So that when you're going by 9G on the site and you're looking in, a lot of it's gonna stay the same, but you're really kind of seeing, you know, a certain amount of parking and pavement from the road view. And so the idea here is to use that sort of extra margin of parking, reduce it a little bit and add some more green and just improve the look from the front. Let's see. I already talked about that other one, and maybe there's a way to work that out. So I think each of the sites has the potential to have parking reduced and some green added. The other thing, I haven't really written this up yet, but I tried to move from the street in between all the buildings. There are a lot of pedestrian ways, and the idea is to link those all together so that a person could walk along the street, come into the site, and be able to walk via extended sidewalks or crosswalks from any point on the site to another part of the site. So I don't think it will be a lot, but-
Walkways, under 108-4.5, walkways being required, but you're suggesting painted crosswalks or painted sidewalks?
In some, in certain locations, just to kind of give a coherent, continuous pedestrian pathway through the site. It's gonna connect the dots.
So if you were gonna go from this building to this building, how you would do it, you're talking about, again, right now, there probably wouldn't be much interaction between these two buildings. That's hospice, that's, I believe-
Warehouse. Yeah, it's a warehouse.
Is Anderson Center not here anymore?
Anderson is on the other side.
So that's what I say, it's, it's half and half, right? It's some Anderson and some office, so-
Correct. Office and warehouse.
I mean, I don't really, so storage, put it that way. So I don't see this, I mean, I think we should plan for the future, but right now, there's not gonna be a lot of interaction. And this is, so this is insurance, kitty dialysis, Anderson Center, storage, and hospice.
Correct. I think that we, we can provide location of crosswalks and, yeah, like the painted crosswalks.
Just like you did, just think of Town Center North.
Yes.
For, no, for crosswalks I'm talking about. You can do the same, painted ladder, I believe it's called?
The ladder.
Yeah, the ladder style.
It's like in green in my eyes. Yeah. Ladder.
I was gonna say, must dream that.
Yes.
Liz, any other comments? Ms. Axelson?
That's it for now. You know, I'll write them up and then we can-
Thank you. That's, those are very, very thoughtful. I think there is room to make this a prettier site and by accommodating a little bit more green here and there, definitely. And 108-4.5, we have the requirement for every parking spaces. We have to have so much landscaping.
Yeah, there, there's a percentage requirement that needs to be added to the chart.
Yeah.
Which is the, the total landscaping in the parking areas. So you have to identify where you don't need it and identify where the standard is. The, the town is gonna be withholding those zoning board applications for the time being until you come back because if you start taking away parking spaces and adding green space, that's gonna change your scale calculation. And Ted, Ms. Moss doesn't want you to have to keep amending your zoning board application, so she's, she's writing today-
Well, wouldn't our application be the worst-case scenario for scale?
It would be, but she, she would prefer that you come back with your numbers and, and finalize it. You can talk to her about it.
Okay.
I'll have other comments about, I didn't want to get into the zoning table comment, but I, I will have some other comments about scale.
So the ZBA must give the minimum variance?
Necessary.
Necessary. I'm guessing that Ms. Moss wants this so that the real, what they would grant, but I see your point. If they grant what's considered the minimum, then you need even less.
Right, but in their mind, if it's, they want to know that it's the minimum necessary, that there are no more spaces for you to remove, et cetera.
Yeah. Talk to, talk to Ted, just to make sure that that they're all, that we're on the same page.
Liz, when can we get your memo?
I'm gonna aim for Monday.
Another thing that's kind of funny, because these are commercial structures, but we do, it's an average density subdivision. So right now, the parent parcel has a certain number of dwelling units assigned to it. And it's actually, you know, with sewer and water, it's, it would be an easy, an easy parcel to develop. So you have to take that total number of dwelling units and assign them to the parcels. So you may want to give parcel three no dwelling units and assign all the dwelling units to parcel two. But it doesn't matter how you allocate them.
So when we, so, so, so we're average density, all subdivisions are average density. Residential is allowed in every district. So we just sort of discovered that when we're doing subdivisions, even if it's commercial now, we know that there is that big, I keep turning this off and on, there's this big area back here. If you guys wanted to, say, develop multifamily, like in a small apartment complex, you could. And as Victoria just said, you, you actually have water and the, unheard of before sewer for the town. So you could do something. So what she's saying is, we haven't done this, we haven't had an application where we've had a subdivision of existing commercial, but for every other subdivision, including, doesn't matter where it is, if they're allowed, say, twenty units and they, they divide up, we just say, do you want it ten-ten? Do you want it eighteen-two? So it's just something for you to consider as you go along. And you, I believe Victoria was saying you might want to assign it all to the back-
Okay. So we're allowed seventy-two dwelling units. You're allowed to allocate it. I mean, you don't get five-five-five-five. You can allocate it however you want, but it's gonna, however you allocate, it's gonna be on the flat moving forward.
And you're allowed seventy-two.
Right.
Can we apply for that? No, no.
No, I'm not.
Actually, actually, if, if Jason and Darren wanted to build something, I kind of think that'd be cool to be myself, just me. Just saying.
Right. That's something to think about.
I don't know if they want to become landlords to, you know, individual tenants.
Well, how do we assign it on the plan? You want it to be on each lot?
There's a density chart here.
Okay, so goes in there?
So you could say, like, propose lot one. So you would say, total this many dwelling units. And then you'd say, lot one gets this, lot two, lot three, lot four. Just a notation allocation.
Okay.
The reason why is because further, if you subdivide further and, like, sold out the parcels, you have a record of where the, where the dwelling units are allowed, basically.
Right. Okay. I understand now. I didn't understand that before.
Because you, you're not thinking a subdivision with residential.
Yeah.
But it can always be turned into residential.
And honestly, I, I just have to throw in, regionally, there's such a demand for rental housing that that's ever a consideration.
I might add, part of this came about because we're looking at changing the zoning with another group that I'm on for the Pine Woods area, including, as you know, another client of yours' site. And we're looking at reselling maybe some parcels to the rear for multifamily. And I thought, oh, wait, what's the density they're gonna get? And I thought, they get the density for the whole, if they combine the whole lot, you get whatever densities on those new parcels if you want to buy them or could buy them. But you get, no matter what, you have a density that's established right there.
Oh, okay, you get the base also, the existing lot. Okay.
Yeah. So if you ever subdivide, like I said, or you, whatever.
Okay.
Transfer the development rights, something, we can figure that out. But there's a way that you guys could already get a lot of housing there. And we're, I think, gonna increase that. So this is all anticipation. There'll be a central sewer in that area, as you know, because otherwise, you can't do anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, this site is, is on the-
Yeah, you're actually on it. So that's what, that's what triggered a lot of this, was to think about more, what possible future uses. So think, other points, Victoria?
Yeah, I have just a few more questions. Because I, what I did is I went through and I tried to identify all the things that cross lot lines and-
Yeah, there's a lot.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
So, well, so first off, I noticed, even though there's water lines, there's two wells. Are those in service?
No.
No.
No. Okay. So they're just abandoned old wells. Okay. And then is the, the building on lot two actually hooked up to the septic?
They're all sewer. Everything's on municipal sewer.
I, I don't see the service line.
We can, we can add it, but they're all on municipal sewer.
I just might be missing it. Okay. So they're all on water and sewer?
Yes.
So then, my next question is, are you gonna be forming a homeowners association or something to manage?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Jerry Camatos call you from Van Nuys' office. I'd asked him to reach out to you, but we figured we'd wait until the meeting, so he can discuss with you his approach to all of the reciprocal processes and how he wants to handle it.
Okay, 'cause it, you know, it's the obvious ones, like water, sewer, the drainage pipes, stormwater parking, but then there's also things, like you must have underground conduits for all of these light poles.
Right.
And he's gonna pay for them.
Oh, my God, right.
But it's, it's very, yeah, it's, we have it under control.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, it's just legal, you're right. I just, I hadn't thought about even that.
I subdivided Boardman Road, I did Boardman Road years ago when I was at Chezzen, and I mean, you know, that was Herculean. So we have it. We've, we've spent a lot of time on it.
Okay.
That's good that you had that experience, because you're right.
My recommendation, and I believe it's required by Department of Health, is that a transportation corporation be formed because-
It's actually, I'm gonna have Jerry call you on it. It's not. And, and we can agree to disagree, but I was, I want to just reserve and have him call you. He's done an extensive amount of investigation on this and research.
Since this afternoon?
You spoke to him this afternoon?
Yes.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Well, I mean, he actually, well, I spoke to him. He wasn't, I went over, I just said this is gonna, you're gonna get a call about this.
Yeah.
Because he was here, so I showed him the map. So, I mean, we don't have a definitive answer, but I think the town is going to want to require a transportation corporation because it's very uncommon to have service lines that serve multiple properties crossing boundaries that aren't owned by a municipal entity or a governmental entity such as DCWWA. And so the question really becomes, who's gonna be responsible for these lines? And, you know, we can keep talking about it, but that's-
Yes. Yep.
-an issue.
Typically, the transportation corporation is formed and the people who own the stock in the transportation are the homeowner, are property owners in this case rather than homeowners. I have a POA, I guess I have an HOA, but that's typically how it's done. And if there's, if you had, for example, with Jeffrey Groves, the homeowners association, because there's all subdivided lots, or the property owners are divided, all the stock will be owned by one person. The person who owns all the lots, that would be Mr. Kaufman. But they still have to do a T-Corp because they're transferring across property lines. So, but if there's a, a way to do this more creatively, you guys discuss.
Yeah, we've thought about it. You know, for example, the, the stormwater detention area is on lot, I think it's one. And so that's the stormwater for the entire lot.
Lot.
So there's a lot of issues that we've, which is, we've been working on this for quite some time.
I know. You first mentioned this a long time, and I thought, they had to go back to the drawing board and think about this.
Back and forth, back and forth, trying to sit down and how to address. And that's why it said the most complicated part of this lot, I think you, or the subdivision, is the reciprocal easements.
And let me go ahead, let me stick in a compliment to you both. When I opened it up, I was like, I see everything, I can read everything, it's very clear. I didn't even notice that I didn't see the sewer line, the sewer connection. Sorry.
Oh, it might be there. I just, I just-
It'd just be hard to see the line.
You know, there's a lot of lines. I just didn't pick it, pick up on it. So I think moving forward, eventually you're gonna have to give me a sewer map anyways, showing, I mean, easement map, showing all the different easement areas.
Yes. Yep, yep.
So if we can start working out these legal issues now, it'll inform the layout as we move forward.
I, the last time that we had spoke, you had suggested that there might be a format that you want to use, similar to one that you had done in another municipality, where there was a series of easements.
Did I say that?
I don't want to use the word globbed, but it's like the most appropriate word to use right now, into one legal instrument.
Oh, there was just kind of like a blanket easement or an omnibus, but-
Yeah. Yes, I don't think we want to do meets and bounds for every easement, but we can have an easement map.
So I'm open to whatever your attorney proposes. What I'm, you know, as we go through every project, it seems to be so unique that it's, it's always hard to apply a model.
Okay. So I'll have him follow up with you on all of those issues and how best you want to handle those.
And, and we'll continue the conversation on the transportation corporation.
About the sewer. Yeah.
Yes.
So there was one comment that I believe came up at an agenda meeting, and I'm bringing it up. I don't happen to agree with it. That had to do with a lot line in the middle of a parking space. I don't see that as an issue. But I'm bringing it up because I think the lot lines are pretty logical, the way they're laid out. So, and parking lot delineations can change, so.
I mean, it was me who made the comment. I just said they'll have to have, they'll have to be handled by the process easements, that's all.
Sure, exactly. That would cover it.
It's the same thing as the access crosses lot line.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, as I said, we just have to make all those things, we kind of answer within the easement, that's all.
Victoria will be busy.
That'll cover it.
Both attorneys will be busy for a while. This has been your year for Hyde Park, a banner of year for easements changing with the enclave and Jeffrey Groves and now this.
Yep.
Good.
Unfortunately, like I said, I love to show Patrick a model, and then I'm like, oh, it doesn't really work. Because, yeah.
Any other comments at this time?
No.
Ms. Weiser, comments?
I just want to echo some of Liz's observations. I think that there is a bit too much parking, and we'd like to see some landscaping and shape up the site for better pedestrian connectivity, not unlike Town Center North.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Ms. Wasser?
I echo Ann's comments.
I didn't even have to tell you that. Thank you. I, but I always, new members, I forget. I always tell new members, if you agree with an earlier comment, please state it for the record, because that way the applicants have a better idea.
Who's thinking what?
I should have added, she was chairman of a planning board in Massachusetts, where they actually run for planning board, like a school board. And she didn't have as great an experience, because they were not as collegial. They were all competitive. But she's familiar with the planning process, so I didn't do what I normally do to say, let's meet, I'll explain this to you, because that would be like me telling a professor, let me show you how the student does it. So-
Different state.
Welcome.
Different state, yes. So some changes, some different variances, but she's able to hit pretty quickly. And thank you for saying that quickly. So, Ms. Dexter?
I also concur with Ms. Weiser. And I just had a question, and I'm sorry, it's not clear to me. Why are you, why are we doing this? Why are we doing a four-lot subdivision on something that's been there for fifty years?
The original approach to this was, the building in the back, they'd like to do some improvements to. It's been there for quite some time.
The building in the back?
The, where Anderson is.
Oh, okay. The Grand Union?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
I used to shop there, and I used to get my green stamps there.
You grew up here, I forget sometimes.
And as I'm sure you know, for financing, it's a lot easier to get financing on something like that when it's an individual lot.
Gotcha, because otherwise they have to, it-
It's very complicated. And the lease with dialysis-
So this is less complicated.
It actually is. I mean, when we did the lease with Liberty Dialysis, it was very, very complicated. And there were some improvements that we made to the property that Liberty actually had to sign off on. It was very, very complicated because it affected another part of the lot, and they had to sign off on it.
Okay. And so plus, they're all, they all have their own domain now, right?
Everyone's gonna have their own domain. Yes, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, it's, it's a shame in one sense, because it does limit the future redevelopment potential of the parcel if you start selling them off, because it is one of the parcels with water and sewer, but-
It just means that it's, 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 each site plan is now its own site plan. And they'll be granted a scale. I assume that, organic variance for the scale, that once that's set, that's gonna be it, too. With the exception of, again, residential doesn't count towards scale back here. It just comes toward in previous coverage, but not scale.
Isn't that funny?
Hint, hint? Hint, hint?
Well, you know, we, I will certainly have the dialogue with them. And, you know, everyone likes to develop lots that you already own, and they're a municipal sewer. So we'll certainly entertain that with them.
I mean, this is a rare parcel, seriously. You've got sewer. The only other parcel that's gonna have it is the new hotel when it gets up and running. Everything else is on individual septic. So, I mean, we do have some central sewer for some residential, residential, anything over fifty dwelling units has to have central sewer. But otherwise, we don't have anything like this. So-
Yeah.
It's untapped potential.
It's untapped potential.
It is. And there, there is a tenant there that might be interested in doing something like that. So we can talk to them about it.
Oh, I was about to say, Mr. Oliver, but in the future, sorry. There's a blank seat, sorry. Ms. De Napoli?
And it's not even that late.
Right.
Nice to see you again, Kelly.
Thank you.
I agree with Liz and I agree with Ms. Weiser. The comments, I totally agree with Michael, that this is a wonderful opportunity, not only for that, that property to possibly be thought about for, for development, but even within the individual subdivisions. The idea of having a second story on one or two for rentals or what have you, I think the whole idea, this is now before us, and it's a great opportunity to spruce it up and freshen it up and shake out the mothballs. And, and thank you for bringing it to us.
Good. Good. Thank you.
I guess I'll, I have the closing comments, and I will also concur with my colleagues. I think this is an excellent opportunity to, now that I've heard Liz, to create the pedestrian connections that are required, as well as maybe to green it up a bit. You guys can take a look at that. You'll also take a look at the, to see if you can play around with the parking area that's associated with building lot three, the insurance. And I, I don't, I don't know what the turning radius is. I do think that, I just want to stand the record for me. I think it is important to keep the drive-by aisle, because the insurance agent doesn't use that, obviously, but if he leaves, then that is sort of a selling point for some, because-
It is.
I know even Heather LaVonway, who reviews us for county planning, used to hate drive-through uses, because she's always trying to encourage pedestrian until she had two small children and said, I love a drive-through. When you have two small kids, taking them out.
I've said that all the time.
Perspective change, clearly.
In fact, I did that with McDonald's.
You did. So I understand now that, that young mothers or young fathers, whatever, with young children, it's, it's a, a lot easier to drive through than it is to walk. So at any rate, that's the only comments I have. Everything else was covered. So we'll get some more information. You guys, should we go and put you on for the next?
Well, I think, so I'm kind of thinking about this. So if we can get Liz's-
Comments?
Comments, we could submit back to you in two weeks. So then we would be on the meeting in November.
For the November. Okay.
And then we could address this, and then perhaps get to the ZBA.
Oh, yeah.
To first over to the ZBA.
That way you can, that way you can get the ZBA going.
Yep. And then maybe in November, we can schedule the public hearing.
Wait, we'll tap the action, refer it, and schedule the public hearing.
And then circulate to.
Yep.
Can you circulate tonight, though, for lead agency?
We don't have a resolution prepared.
No.
Do we want to wait till the plans are more, who, let's see, wait, who are the involved agencies?
Just the ZBA.
The one thing that I wish I'd raised-
The zoning board automatically defers to planning board, and they've already passed a resolution.
Oh, okay. So that's the only other-
We have an agreement that we do secret, both are involved.
But we, I think we will circulate to Town of Poughkeepsie, because they're providing water, sewer-
Also, aren't they within the certain distance of the town line we have to?
We'll have to tell them about the public hearing.
And then we have to circulate to DC Planning, because it's on a state highway. Otherwise,[1658.32] Otherwise, there's no other involved agency that I can think of.
I briefly, I don't know if it was at the agenda meeting or I spoke with Michael, but said, "There's no change in architecture, we're not going to ask for renderings or elevations, but photographs of each somewhere in the plans"
Oh, right, sorry.
"would be helpful so that we don't get the comment back from the county that says, 'You didn't give us architectural.'"
I do have that down in my notes here. It was cryptic for me to read, thank you.
I'm dribbling tonight, so sorry.
I don't want Heather kicking anything back and starting a new three-day, so just pictures, that's always acceptable.
So in November we can circulate?
Yep.
Do we need to circulate for lead agency?
Well...
Well, we're also going to be sending it to Town of Poughkeepsie and to zoning board. I guess that's it.
But we are lead agency.
But the only other...
We would be circulating.
But the only other approving agency is...
Right, we'd send it to all the interested agencies, just in case they have comments.
That's it.
So we have to wait until November to circulate for lead agency?
But, but like I said, zoning board automatically cedes to, to planning board on lead agency.
What it does, though, is that in November, if the board had a public hearing and wanted to take action, you couldn't, we still have to wait thirty days?
I'm just, if we, even if we circulate at the next meeting, we still have, we don't have a second meeting in November because of Thanksgiving when it fell. So we'd have to wait until after the seventeen, or the thirty days after the seventeenth. We don't have a resolution tonight. Are we, could, could we circulate? We don't circulate by motion, we circulate by resolution.
The board, the board could.
Oh, wait, Cynthia's going to scream at me because I'm not allowed to do that.
So board, the board's welcome to do that, that's not an issue. It's just whether you feel you have sufficient information at this point to send to all the other agencies. So...
I mean, I think the applicant...
I can't send to county, you can't...
Right, well, it's not ready, it's not ready to go to the county because it's missing the new landscaping, and you need the photos of the site, but...
I don't, I don't have, I haven't been all the way through the EAF, but it's all existing stuff, so.
Let's wait till November, let's wait till November. Just, you guys work on, because you've got some decisions to make, but where you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a
Floating. It's probably not that big a deal, it's not that big a deal, but you, you're still, it's, you're going to have to make decisions about where to remove parking, where to put in green, across your, your eyes, the, the table, the crosswalks.
My ladder.
Ladder, there we are, the ladder crosswalks, right, table's something different than ladder.
The more information you can give me about your easement plan, homeowners association, whatever it is you're going to form, it's going to be helpful.
We may have to do just a meeting with you if the board allows that, just with Jerry and you.
I think, I think the two of you can, can actually meet separately, unless you need us.
Moving, he's there too. Okay, all right, very good.
So place hold on November, we'll, we'll wait to get new information from you in the meantime. Since we'll have extra time, we should be able to do a really thorough review, and then we'll circulate type, et cetera, on that, instead of public hearing for the first meeting in December.
In December. When is the meeting in November? It's the first meeting, obviously?
Seven.
November seventh, that's, the problem was is the next one would have been the twenty-first, which is right, it's the day, it's the day before Thanksgiving. I don't plan to be here, Michael. We were hoping nobody would plan to be here on the night before Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Oliver. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for a mudroom addition for Chad Remph, located at Seven River Road. This is visible from the Vanderbilt Carriage House. However, this is only visible from the Carriage House itself, and it's an attractive addition to this property. We've also given waivers to this same site, this will be the third. And we have the recommendation of the zoning administrator. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Chad Remph, Seven River Road, Hyde Park, site plan waiver for replacing existing mudroom, town code section 108-9.4C2, resolution 2018-56, whereas, 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 whereas. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is another request for a site plan waiver. Interestingly, this was, this is Franca Bandiero, located at 15 Watson Place. They received, after a long process, maybe six months, they received an area variance for the addition of a very large garage being added on. Ms. DeNapoli, Ms. Weiser, and myself all drove by to take a look at the site because I was concerned, I couldn't tell from the elevation, the first one I saw, if it was going to impact stormwater before we waived, because it turns out, it's all the same system that it is now. It's all gutter, there's no water, stormwater going off on the other side, anything else, which is why TAD then had recommended it to us. This is not visible from the river or from the two historic sites, it's just located in the current overlay district. Who has this file?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Edward Franca Bandiero, resolution number 2018-58, whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Edward Franca Bandiero for a front porch addition, re-siding, re-roofing, rear screen porch, and garage associated with a single-family home requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirement for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, April 3, 2018, and per the request to the Planning Board dated April 30, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're getting those seconds in, Ann, thank you.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is another request for site plan waiver. This is for Valerie Belli and Lyle Dampier. This is for a small house located at Four Park Place. These are major improvements, I believe everyone would note. Their house is actually, the Dampiers' actual residence, known colloquially as the Hearst House.
Mm-hmm. Dr. Hearst.
Dr. Hearst was, it's in McKinnon Meet and White Building on the National Historic Registry, and they're buying some parcels around them to improve them, to improve the whole area. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Belli and Dampier, Four Park Place, site plan waiver, resolution number 2018-61. Whereas an application requesting a waiver site plan, waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Mr. and Mrs. Dampier on September 20, 2018, for property located at Four Park Place in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled, entitled Belli and Dampier regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application dated September 18, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for a rear kitchen addition. This is located at 31 Garden Street. This site is not located, it's in the historic overlay district, but it is not visible from the river or the two historic sites, i.e. the Vanderbilt and the Roosevelt Estates. And we have the recommendation from the zoning administrator, so who has this file?
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Jeffrey Lee, site plan waiver for kitchen addition, resolution number 2018-63. Whereas, 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 whereas. Did I do five?
You don't have to do all of them.
Oh, I don't? Oh, good. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The motion will be...
The last item on the agenda, I, I apologize again, I sent out a late email. It was a busy day of meetings. So what happened is, is that, to reiterate, Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, we had, I believe it's thirteen water and sewer districts that were transferred to the Water and Wastewater Authority to manage rather than the town, or homeowners association in the case of Pine Brook. Once that was done, they discovered, as they did their assessments, that many of the wastewater treatment facilities and the water plants were in need of upgrades, replacements, and improvements. Specifically, they thought that they were exempt from the town zoning code. They were corrected today. They immediately admitted that they should have circulated the Pine Brook Estates to us. They did not. They circulated to the town board for lead agency, but not the planning board. So as a consequence, what they asked to do, because Pine Brook, the wastewater treatment facility is so bad that the tanks are in danger of collapsing, they're under a consent decree with DEC to replace them as fast as possible. In addition, in the original design done thirty years ago, there's no, there's no protection. A person walking in there, a homeowner, could actually fall in to areas that you don't want to fall into. I'll leave it at that. Yes. So they had actually gone, they, because they didn't, they did not think that they were bound under our code. We had a meeting today with the supervisor, our attorney, the town attorney, where it was agreed that in the future, they'll be coming through for site plan waiver or, or review. TAD will make the determination as to whether she believes that under certain sections of the code, and that's, I think, 108-9.4, that we and her, she can find that they're minimal enough that we can move forward. In the case of Pine Brook, they're removing a building that you now walk into and could fall into, as I said, things you don't want to fall into. The building is, the polite term would be odoriferous. And they're now going to make it so that some tanks are buried, the treatment areas will be about a foot above the ground, there'll be manholes where the tanks are. There will be a filtration system so to remove all odor, which will be vented in a different location. They're not changing the discharge point, and they're redoing the landscaping to provide better screening than what's there now. So TAD agreed that it was de minimis to, under our code, the way she could look at it, so this way they can, and of course, these are residents we want to help. I mean, they have a failing sewer system, so I think we, we'd all like to assist them.
Right, this one was de minimis, in the future they're going to...
It's a case-by-case basis.
Right.
So we have a resolution prepared. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
You're welcome. It was funny because we had first discussed maybe having to do a Monroe hearing on this, and I said, "Rather than do that, and us come to a conclusion that you're not exempt," that you're not exempt, and their attorney more or less agreed pretty quickly. More or less, notice I said.
I think he did.
Yeah, he seemed to. The other, I think I should add is that the town board is considering waiving certain fees, maybe all of them, except for, my recommendation will be not to waive escrow because we'll still need resolutions written in some cases for this. In addition, what TAD's going to look at, so everybody knows, is Pine Brook is somewhat unique because there's a very active homeowners association there. So DCWWA has been in contact with the HOA with their regular meetings, it's been disseminated out, but for example, the next project they anticipate is Greenfields Neighborhood, an improvement, replacing certain modules of their wastewater treatment facility. It's aging, but it's in a concrete building, so it's actually, the building is worth saving. The point they're tearing down at Pine Brook is actually wood and falling apart. I mean, this was just not done well. So, but that one, because there's no HOA, it's just houses. We're not aware that they, I mean, they get, they get notices in their bills talking about that you're going to have an increase, and this is why, an improvement, but TAD and I, must say, I agree, thinks it might be better if there was an opportunity for people there to come and comment, ask questions.
Absolutely.
And I did tell DCWWA today that normally we try to answer the questions rather than having a dialogue between members of the public and the applicants. But in this case, because some of them might be technical, we probably need to have them here in these cases because I don't know how to answer stuff about sewage treatment plants. I've learned a lot, but I'm not sure I want to commit that to further memory. So any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, it's interesting, the county is not aware that they're required for any site plan processes?
So they're not, so the state and federal are specifically given exemptions from town code. Not all, not all. County is limited exemption depending. This is not, this is not a county, this is Dutchess County Wastewater Authority.
The state, the state used to have, it used to be that if it was governmental, it was exempt. If it was a non-governmental use, it was not exempt. But that distinction, distinction has been muddled throughout the years because now you have ballparks that are owned by a community, but they are rented to private entities, et cetera. So that went away probably thirty years ago, and in its place, there's no as of, there's no per se exemption. Instead, the, each community has to do a balancing of interest test to determine whether the intruding municipality or entity, governmental entity, is exempt, and you have to balance, you know, seven different factors to decide.
Is that the analysis tagged it?
Did you have to give the right focus? She might have given, I don't know if she sent the email with, with those balancing factors or not. So the entity seeking approval has the option of complying, which, you know, could be faster. In this case, it's an easier process. Or going through this Monroe analysis, which also requires a public hearing and a balancing of interest tests, and at the end, after all of that, the entity could ultimately decide that you're still subject to the zoning. So that's, we've done that before.
Several times.
Yes, several times.
We've conducted Monroe analyses of the balancing tests. We, well, I won't go back into the history, but I will say that if, if they said that they were exempt, we'd have to go through, setting a public hearing, marshalling our arguments, having them say what they say, we have to hear from the public. And then they would only then, if, if we said, "Okay, you're exempt," only then would they be able to then apply for the building permit, et cetera, to get this construction going. They need to get this, their contractor expects to start on October 15, before our next meeting.
So it all sounds very collegial and commonsensical, but I was surprised that they didn't know they were...
It's because it's been muddied over the years by court case law.
No, they said they are apologized for overlooking it.
Well, the initial email that started this off said we thought we were exempt, and I wrote back, "No, you're not."
Oh, okay.
That's how it started.
So at the meeting today, it was an overlooking.
Okay.
But...
And I listed the criteria for the Monroe, and I also listed which...
So they must have went back and taken a look.
Sorry, that was me. I like to, I like to make sure the planning board has some, again, not controlled necessarily, but that we're aware. Particularly for TAD, we have a signed site plan for Pine Brook. This is going to change that site plan, so the waiver, they're providing their, their materials, so the waiver will then be incorporated with the changes in the site plan because they have a little site, little miniature site plan. That's now incorporated into the record, so now we know what's going on everywhere. That's part of how you avoid problems like create stat slot line.
Right, they're right in front of red, they already have one, they've already turned them in.
Oh, good, thank you. So who has this resolution?
I do.
Next up with two and nine?
Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority replacement wastewater treatment plant at 225 Pine Brook Drive, resolution 2018-64, whereas, whereas, seven more times. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. May I get a motion, oh, well, first, I just want to say a pleasure to have you. And in case anyone was wondering about the seating, I came in and Cynthia had placed you here, and I went, woman, man, woman, man, woman, man, woman. So I just want to point out that we now have a female majority on the board, too.
Yeah, man.
Sounds good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.